WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equahousan Leader Member FDIC.
We call the Fintress County Commission meeting order. Please rise for presentation of the colors. Remain standing for opening prayer and pledge to the flag, please.
Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Freeze it, arms.
Oh, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors reverse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Order, colors. Order, arms.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we come to you this evening, thank you for the opportunity you've given us as the commission to serve, serve the people of Fintress County. Father, I pray tonight as we conduct the business of the county that we would do so in a manner that be pleasing unto you. Father, I pray that the decisions that are made would be those that you would have us to make. Now, Father, I do pray for those families that in Fintress County here that have lost loved ones in the past few days. Father, I pray a special blessing on them, one county employee or I'm one dispatcher, father of the Brown family, I do lift them up especially, but then there's been others as well. We want to remember those families and ask your blessings and your comfort on the family members. Again, I ask you to be with us here tonight as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Before we get started, I'd like to say that Mayor Cross is in Nashville, Tennessee with the Solid Waste Director Jackie Selby, who has been presented with the Grand Administrator of the Year for Keep Tennessee Beautiful, so he cannot be here tonight. Roll call, Marilyn.
Jimmy Johnson?
Here.
Justin Miller?
Here.
J.P. Reagan?
Here.
Kim Davidson?
Here.
Benny Hughes?
Here.
Donald Williams?
Here.
Mr. Beauty? Jeff Green?
Here.
Larry Cooper?
Here.
Mike Matthews?
Here.
We have a call. We have two sets of minutes, one for 8:21, 2017, and a special call meeting on 9:01, 2017. Is there any additions or subtraction from the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by, make sure who's got that. J.P. Reagan? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Danny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Pass.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Notaries have Jeffrey W. Green and Virginia K. Rains. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Benny Hughes, do I have any discussion? Roll call.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Jeff?
Pass.
Motion carries. Item number eight is a proclamation in recognition of 11 12-year-old Fintress County Cal Ripken League accomplishments. Who's the spokesperson? Come on up, Mr. Jimmy Johnson's going to read the proclamation for you. Now, get the, when you get ready, get the kids up here and they can get in the picture there. Yeah, yeah, come on up. Absolutely.
Proclamation to honor the Fintress County 11 Under All-Stars in the Board of Commissions for Fintress County, Tennessee. Whereas the Fintress County 11 Under All-Stars team consists of the top 11 players from the 11 12-year-old Fintress County Cal Ripken Tink League. Whereas the Fintress County 11 Under All-Stars team finished as runners-up in the 12-year-old district tournament. Whereas the Fintress County 11 Under All-Stars team has finished as runners-up two years straight in the State of Tennessee Tournament. Whereas the Fintress County 11 Under All-Stars team received at an at-large bid to represent the State of Tennessee and Cal Ripken National Southeastern Region. Whereas the Southeastern Regional Tournament was held in Orlando, Florida on July 18th through 22nd, 2017, where the tournament consisted of teams from Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, Bermuda, and the Bahamas. Now therefore, be it resolved that J. Michael Cross, County Executive, and the Fintress County Commission hereby honors the players, coaches, and parents of the 2017 11 Under All-Stars team. Congratulations on a very successful season. Adopted this 18th day of September, 2017, Fintress County, Tennessee, J. Michael Cross, County Executive.
Could we get the parents up here, please? You can come on up to the microphone there and speak if you can.
The kids did a real good job. When we got down to Florida, it was a different experience. For example, we played at, I think it's nine o'clock in our time in the morning. It was 90 something degrees when we were playing that. It's a different, took us a couple days to get used to it. The first day pretty rough on us. The next day, we was ready to go. The kids did a great job though all season. We were beating some teams. Here, we beat, like Hendersonville's one of the teams. If you look at the number of kids that they have compared to us, we got about 25 kids this age in our league and they're not 100, you know, 200 kids. I think there was one team that we, in the regional we played, and you might correct me, they said they had 25,000 kids in their league out of Raleigh, North Carolina, very good. You know, it's pretty, it was, but our boys competed with it. We hung in there pretty well. And it was a great experience and the kids did a good job.
Step up there and introduce yourself.
Hey, everybody look at me here, let me go. All right, parents and all, you can even look at me, okay?
Don't want to introduce yourself here, go right ahead. Step up there to the microphone, tell who you are.
My name's Ethan Haley.
Speak up.
My name's Ethan Haley.
My name's Ethan Y moon.
My name's Alex Waters.
My name is Lee Carnes.
Can you tip those way? Tell me your name.
My name's Tanner Talon.
My name is Eli Garrett.
Andrew Hall.
Brayden Cho. I'm Richard Talon, I'm the manager of Josh Cho. Rest of, we're back to looking real good here. He's one of the managers. Nathan Haley's the manager, Willie Waters is, can't be here tonight with us, he's working, but he's one of our coaches. Would also, we'd like to thank all the people that helped sponsor, because we raised a lot of money to go on the trip, because that's pretty big. You know, all the parents had to take off for a whole week and the community really came together to help us out a lot. It was a lot of businesses, I don't feel, do you remember how much was raised? It was several thousand dollars, because you know hotels and food and stuff to help the kids. It helped a lot. We couldn't have went without everybody, so we want to thank yous for that.
Congratulations.
One thing we'll note too is that, and you guys may not realize, that some of the commissioners and the county executives, the people in the courthouse donated money. And with that money, we decided to decide, the kids each got a ring. They got one of the rings, which was really nice. And they got, that's something they'll keep forever. So you all contributed to that, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, item number nine, the jail was surprisingly inspected. Sheriff, you want to speak to it? Detective Jail Inspector? Yeah, come on up.
Jail Inspector come this week, like I say, they don't notify us and tell us when they're coming, they just pop in. Stayed probably four or five hours. Whenever he left, he signed off and said there were no deficiencies in the jail.
Outstanding. Thank you, Sheriff. Number 10, annual audit report. Mr. Philip Forrest, I believe you're on that one.
Y'all got a copy of them, send them to your mind. This is the second year we've done this and five less findings than we were last year, so it is working. The state auditor has come in and then we meet with them, and then we meet with each one of the department heads, and everybody's worked along real good. Seems like it's going good. The state's also got a law out, or they want to find zero at some point, they're talking about attaching the grant funding for the county. But we're going in the right direction, it's looking a lot better. Y'all got any questions?
I have looked at this, Phil, how many findings were there this year?
There's five left, total of seven, I think.
I make the motion, we accept it, we need a motion on that. I did a motion by Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Who's got that? Justin? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Thank you, Philip. Item number 11 is a consideration of appointment of Joe Wheeler of Micro Metals to the Fintress County ID Board, which will fill the term till 2020, is that correct? Seven, okay. Do I have a motion? So moved. Okay, Mr. Green, do I have a second? Mr. Hughes? Any discussion? Roll call, Redman.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Danny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Four?
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Item number 12 is a consideration of passing an ID Board resolution in support of local manufacturing companies and declaring the first week of October as Manufacturing Week, which it says Friday, October the 6th, I guess is the, is that the end date or the kickoff date?
That'd be the end date.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Jackson, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's a good opportunity to recognize the industry that we have here. We already have businesses here, and sometimes I think we fall short in appreciating them for everything they do and they bring to the county. You know, we're constantly trying and striving to bring new jobs here, but we always need to slow down and be thankful for what we have. So I think that's an awesome idea to do that and promote that for the week of October, first week of October.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, X.
Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration retirement proposal for the K-9 officer, Jackal. Do you two want to come up or no? People that don't know, this is Sheriff Michael Reagan. Deputy Jacob Byrd, who's leaving us.
And he's taking his dog.
And he's taking his dog.
What he said. He's going to be going to Coopel City. He got hard on him a little, Brandon Cooper, they got better benefits, better retirement. Age 55, they can retire, full benefits. I don't blame him a bit for going, anytime he's better than somebody, I'm all for it. He's got a dog, passed head for two, two and a half year, Jack. Of course, he's asked to take the dog with him. It will not be worth retiring the dog, and he'll be a, actually, he can adopt the dog as a pet. Make a contribution to the drug fund.
And I'll jump in there and say, I've talked extensively with both Sheriff and Officer Byrd. Jackal has completed his training, but maybe had a little bit of difficulty in certification there towards the end, so he's winding down essentially anyway. There's an agreement that they both agreed to sign, we've prepared a little contract that says once Jackal is retired, he's not eligible for work as a K-9 officer any longer. He's got, not going to be activated or recertified in K-9 work. Officer Byrd didn't have to offer to make a contribution to the drug fund, simply he's doing that in honor of, excuse me, of Jackal and the good work that he's done. Sheriff has also asked me to help him draft a policy that says essentially if, and he doesn't have any plans today to hire on a new K-9 officer or a new dog, if he does so in the future during the next year, if someone chooses to do that, then they would have to sign a contract that would essentially say they will work for the county for a certain period of time in exchange for the county's paying for the training, because the officer gets training along with the dog, just like we did with EMT to paramedic and a couple other things that the county's done over the years, but something similar to that. I think what Officer Byrd has said is that he would just take this dog home as a pet and he doesn't have any intention of using him any longer. If you look at the standards, national standards, it says that essentially this dog cannot be trained properly to work with another officer and it becomes a liability if you try to do that and the dog does not respond properly, then you're essentially doing more harm than good by keeping the dog on and trying to retrain him and the money that that would take for him to go back through that training program with another officer. So, once this dog is retired, I think that's where we're going to go. Is that a fair statement on your potential policy we'd put in place?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd, you want to speak?
I just want to let y'all know, I spoke with the ADA, Philip Kizie, and he tried to do some math, but he's been over 10,000, he's coming back into the drug fund over the cases, which are all in his book, the Jackal has made, which is over 100 deployments since I've had him. I did talk to the sheriff about, you know, about revamping him, maybe not going through the same kennel that we went through before, because I don't feel like he upheld his bargain. I've been a K-9 a long time, Jackal's the third dog I've ran in 16 years. If I hadn't been blessed with some knowledge and training myself, I kind of self-made that dog. So, it just, there's a real strong bond between me and the dog. I put a lot of work into him that didn't just go on the tide. So he's not just a dog to me, he's my partner and he's my family. So it's just hard for, you know, to want to give him up, that's why we're here, at least I hope y'all consider that, and I'm willing to make the contribution, you know, into the drug fund to keep him, because he's part of mine and my family and wife, and he's put a lot of work into the dog. And I believe he's earned his keep since he's been here, it was just a short period of time. So, if you want to look, you're welcome to look at the books of all this stuff, his training laws and etc.
Benny?
Sheriff, is it your recommendation to grant ownership to Officer Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion as such.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Justin. Any discussion?
I'd like to say, I mean, the public needs to know, I guess, we do still have a drug dog. This won't leave us without a drug dog, we have another. Yes, we have one.
Chair?
I move to amend the motion by adding the words that we refuse the contribution to the drug fund from Officer Byrd. It sounded like that dog has earned his keep while he's been here, he's at home, and I, and he's reached his, kind of his useful life, and I would, I'd just feel bad if Officer Byrd felt he had to pay money to keep him.
I have a motion to amend the original motion, do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Jimmy Johnson?
Yep.
Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call, please.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Nine, four, one, X.
Motion carries to amend the original motion that Officer Byrd not pay any money. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to say, Jacob, thank you for all the time you put in Fintress County, and you will be missed, you're a really good officer.
Sheriff?
I appreciate it, I just, I couldn't pass the opportunity.
And we understand that, but again, miss, you, what you did for the county.
Appreciate your service.
Sheriff, do you have anything else?
I'd like to thank the commissioners for.
Any other discussion on this?
Don't let him leave before we sign this, put it in Amanda's file.
Roll call, please.
Where I did that?
No, we voted on the amendment.
Yeah.
No, we need to amend the motion.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Item 14, consideration of renewal of the jail commissary.
Okay, the jail commissary, they've been getting 28%. The county had been getting 28% of what the items that were sold into the prisoners in the back of the jail, and I had a meeting with them, me and Candy met with them, they come from Atlanta up here, three of them, and talked about getting us more money, and then they, they went back and brought the booklet back that Leslie had there and proposed to pay us 38% instead of 28%.
It's your recommendation to renew the contract for a year, then?
Yes.
And that's a change from being a five-year contract?
It's only, it's on one-year contracts now.
Previously had been five.
It had been a five-year contract. I told him I wanted it on a year contract, and they said they could do that.
I make a motion that we accept this new contract.
Motion by, motion by Kim, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Green, any further discussion?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
15, consideration of resolution for creating a human resource and risk management position for Fintress County. Kim, you want to give an update on that?
Yes, for a good while, we've kind of known this was coming. Due to a lot of the grants that we received and different things that we apply for, for the federal government, state government, there's certain requirements that they ask of us, that the county has to do. We have to be in compliance with, we have to have a public records coordinator, we have to do the Americans with Disabilities Act, we have to do the Title VI program, and it just goes on and on. We have tried the best we could to give a little piece here, a little piece there, and a little piece, well, we finally got to the point where we can't do that anymore. We have overburdened to the point now where we're not getting everything done as required. So, in order to answer all these different tasks that have been put on us, and so we are compliant with audits, that they're going to look at that, make sure that we do have, you know, someone that does the request for records, or someone that does the Americans with Disabilities Act. And then also the census for 2020, we've already been told we have to have a coordinator in place for that, so this person will actually assume that duty. So, we sit down and we looked at everything that we had to become compliant with, we made a list of job duties to do that, and we tried to pull some work off some other employees that were kind of overburdened, and we tried to structure this to kind of, hopefully, we did a workload analysis of all the employees, like in finance and different places, and tried to consolidate and make a decision where it could help out in other ways. So, in doing so, we have done that, we have a committee that put together a list of job duties, and when we advertise this job, when we publicize that, these job duties will be available for review, and we're going to look at our candidates, hopefully, you know, experience is going to give a whole lot of consideration if we can get somebody to come to the table that, you know, already has some of this training, so they're going to be underneath the county commission, and that's actually who's going to be, the person that, the group that hires them, they will directly report to the county executive. So, this is just a proposal that we can establish this position.
Kim, you might explain why the difference in reporting to the county executive and...
Right. We did that for a reason. When we first started talking about this, it almost made sense, well, that just needs to be a position that goes into county executive's office. But after researching this and talking to other counties and to other agencies, the training that's involved for this person is extensive, and the money that's going to be involved to train this person, you know, and so we didn't want to risk the fact that if, you know, the election changed our county executive, that this position went along with it. So that's why we separated it out, so this hopefully could be a long-term hire, that it wouldn't be something that would be tied to an election. This would be somebody that would be, and they will deal with, you know, all the offices in the courthouse and different things, and help make sure that they're compliant with these rules and regulations. So I think it'll help, you know, they'll be the go-to person. If you have somebody that's going to be on FMLA, or you have a workman's comp claim, they're going to be the person that takes care of all that.
Entertained a motion to advertise for this position. So moved. Motion by Jimmy Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
By J.P. Reagan. Any further discussion?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
J.P.?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donna?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Um, item number sixteen is consideration of ambulance service group proposal advertised for bids, uh, we have received two. Bid number one is from Porter Roofing, the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand, sixty-five dollars. Bid number two was from P&amp;L Construction, uh, for sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and three dollars.
Um, after looking at the bids and trying to be the best stewards of the county's money, um, I, in my opinion, as being over the building committee, I'm gonna make the suggestion that we reject these bids and re-advertise and, um, put the option in as going back to shingles. We had thought about doing the stand and seeing, that was our first choice because of longevity of it, but looking at the cost-wise, you know, how much it's gonna cost to do that, I think we need to do a comparison for shingles, because, you know, if we got about twenty years out of the shingles that are there now, we need to see what that cost is gonna be and that may be the best option, you know? So, again, that may not be the guarantee way that we go, but I think that we need to consider that option again. You know, we have a limited amount of money that we have to spend and we have to consider everything we're doing, so as being over the building committee, that would be my recommendation.
So is that a motion?
Um, I make a motion to reject the bids, represent specs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Green, any discussion? When is the building committee meeting again?
Uh, we've set a meeting. We'll, um, I'll schedule one for next week, early.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
JP?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Benny?
Four.
Donald?
Four.
Jeff?
Four.
Larry?
Four.
Wade?
Four.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen, uh, consideration of approval of ordering the land survey and appraisal of the McBroom property to prepare for the LPRF grant through TDEC. Motion by Benny Hughes to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Dawn Williams. Any discussion? Ms. Green?
We, we need to find out what kind of survey that they're needing, other than just a boundary survey, they may want one with elevation shots on it and, and so on, so we're not having to reinvent the wheel.
Jeff, the engineer has those specs to give to the surveyor, telling him, he's laid it out, is my understanding, that, just exactly what they have to have for the grant.
Okay.
That comes sort of pre, that comes preset, we don't get much say in that.